Good evening and welcome to the June 27th, 2017 Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education meeting. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation. If you will all please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this beautiful summer day. And Lord, this summer will be full of new experiences for many of our students and our staff, new jobs, exciting trips, vacations to new places never seen before. So Lord, grow us, Lord stretch us wherever we go and whatever we do so that we'll end this summer just a little more caring, just a little bit wiser, and full of a little bit more love for all of mankind. May our words and actions always be pleasing in your sight. Amen. You may be seated. Okay, so first up, we have a few changes to the agenda for this evening. Under discussion items, we would like to remove Item D, the Agile Mind Education Holdings Contract. And under the action items, we'd like to remove two things. Item D, the Agile Mind Education Holdings Contract, and approval of the YMCA of Northwest North Carolina Contract. Are there any other changes to the agenda? If not, could I have a motion? Thank you, Ms. Taylor, a second. Ms. Clark, all in favor? Thank you very much. This evening, we would like to take time to thank someone who was transitioning in our organization, so Ms. Carol Montague-Davis, would you please come and join us? Please? That was a scared look.
Yes, you.
You did it right color, too.
I know.
Why didn't you do that?
We got it right. So Carol, we just, you're not leaving us, but we have worked very closely with you. Three years ago, you were the first person that I remember with a big smile. And when we first landed in these new seats, you said, here's how to get in touch with me, I'll help you, whatever you need, and you've done that. Every meeting, I can always look at the back of the room and see your smiling face. You're the first one on your feet to applaud our students for their success, and you're the first one up to applaud your colleagues for their success. We know that you're going to do a great job at Carver. So Carver Nation colors, we've got it right. And don't delete us out of the phone, and we won't delete you because we're still going to call you and just put us on a permanent list so we can come see you at Carver. But we just want to say thank you for all that you do, not only for us, but all that you do for this district.
Oh, thank you.
Madam Chair, while Carol is going back to her seat, I also just want to say publicly what the board and the staff already know, which is, it isn't often in our career that people make this kind of a move from the heart and feel called and drawn to go back to a place where they know they can have tremendous impact. And when we knew we were going to be replacing the principal at Carver, it was a little scary because we know what the needs are, we know how much they deserve experience, passionate leadership, and that's not always the easiest bill to fill. And so when Carol came to us and said, gosh, this just makes me feel really joyful to think about returning to where my heart is, it was a real blessing to us and to our district.
Absolutely.
And so I'm proud of her. I want people to know that we consider this a promotion. She's getting a salary increase. She is getting a new extended contract because it is also our way of saying how much we want to see Carver continue in a real positive direction. And so we will miss you, but she made us all put her number at the top of our phone list so that she has her colleagues around Executive Cabinet to call on. But it is a very unselfish thing that you're doing here, and it makes me really proud to work with you.
Thank you. So we have no one signed up for public comments on agenda items, so we will move right into our discussion items this evening. First off, recognize Trish Ganey to discuss some changes to the 2017-18 bell times.
Good evening Chairman Jones, School Board, and Dr. Emery. Transportation is recommending this evening bell schedule changes for two schools for the following reasons. ESA has moved its physical location from the Cook Campus to Cross Nor Campus. So therefore, because of the change in the location, they will be on a traditional middle school magnet bell time, which is 7:55 to 2:25, that would be for ESA. The second request will be for Petri has requested a bell schedule change since they no longer have grant money to fund an extended day. The Petri bell schedule will change from 8:15 to 3:15 to 8:45 to 3:15. Questions?
Board members' questions? I think we also covered this at the building and grounds.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ganey. Next, Marty Ward will discuss the data sharing agreement for 2017-18.
Good evening Board of Education, Chairman Jones, Dr. Emery. The proposed data sharing agreement is an agreement between Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools and Forsyth Futures, a partner of United Way. United Way provides grant funding to multiple community agencies and to a number of our schools. The purpose of the data sharing project is to provide a data management system where organizations can effectively collect information such as student rosters and program attendance, as well as student outcome data such as school attendance, discipline, and grades. The data will be used at the site level for case management to better match services to student need and for program evaluation. Schools and community organizations must carry out program evaluations so that they can examine the impact of program services on student outcomes. The project calls for district oversight on program evaluation and reporting of results. Support will be provided to the sites on the appropriate use of data and on program evaluation methods. All reports that use school system information require district approval before they are shared. The project, if approved, would begin with a pilot effort at six sites, three community agencies and three schools, one at each level, elementary, middle, and high. It is important to note that this agreement carefully specifies assurances about the security of shared data. First, in accordance with law, parent permission must be obtained for any individually identified information to be shared. Second, agencies must agree to specific ways to safeguard the data. The cost of the data management system to be shared equally by the school system and Forsyth Futures is twofold. The first cost is the purchase of a data platform and reporting system called Comet. Comet would allow student academic data from the district to flow into the data system on a regular basis, given that parent permissions are in place. Comet is a customizable product where a variety of types of information can be housed and a number of reports can be generated. The second cost for the data sharing agreement is for a data sharing coordinator position. The person in this position would be responsible for providing all six sites with training and technical support on the Comet system. This person would also oversee data security, including the management of parent permissions. Those permissions, again, must be in place before data are transferred to the system. This effort would begin as a pilot at the six sites. It is anticipated that once the project is fully operational at those six sites, we will be able to incrementally add additional school and community sites.
I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I just wanted to clarify that this is really Forsyth's promise. Is that correct, that this is something that the promise is asking for?
It's connected.
And I think it's important to get some clarity. I know we had conversations when I was on the Executive Committee about wanting to make sure we're sharing data because the Forsyth Promise is a group that works so much with the whole community to try to address the needs of all our students. So I think when you, if you hear the term Forsyth Futures, that sounds more like data where it's a Forsyth. So is that important? I think it's important to just clarify that it's really a partnership with the promise and that the agent is Forsyth Futures, but the goal is for us to be collaborative with Forsyth Promise.
Thank you.
If I could maybe put a little different spin on that. All of these agencies and folks partner together. What I would say, the data backbone that is also supported by United Way is Forsyth Futures.
Right.
And that's the reason the contract is tight, is that we're talking about student data here, and so how can we do this in a way that works for us as a district, for the child, in protecting them and their data? But the agencies that are serving our kids also can get meaningful evaluation results. The specific Comet and the pilot sites, I'm understanding that that is not necessarily a derivative of Forsyth Promise.
So ask the question again.
The beginning pilot sites that we're talking about this.
Schools or the community?
Well, the schools and the agencies.
Partnership at the six sites.
Are those derivatives of, I thought that came from United Way funding of those agencies.
It does. They are all funded in part by United Way.
And not necessarily are they projects that have come through Forsyth Promise? Is that, am I correct or not?
That's my understanding. Adam's saying yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct.
So they're United Way partnership projects.
Right.
That I'm certain are supported by Forsyth Promise.
Okay. What are the three organizations other than our three schools?
Yeah, that's what the community was.
It's Elwayne Pastor, the YWCA, and Salvation Army.
What was the first one, I'm sorry?
Elwayne Pastor.
The one, so a couple of things, so that I just need some clarity on, is the longevity of the agreement? And so I don't, nowhere do I see how long there's a commitment to do the, so if we make the investment for the Comet software, where is the, we would like to do this at least for three years, or, I didn't see anything in here that talked about how long we would do this. And so my concern is that, well, it's one year, but, you know, one year we start something and that just starts to get some.
How do you decide?
Yeah, and how do you move forward with this? The first year is going to be some learning, and so what's the commitment? I mean, I'm reluctant to approve just because I'm not, no one could tell me we're making an investment for three years, and I'm afraid that we start down this path and we start to use data, the school district makes an investment, others make an investment, but at the end of this one year, the funding's gone and we walk away from it. So I think I had sent a couple of emails trying to get some clarity on, could we put this in here? What does that look like? And that was never really answered. And so I'm not sure who can answer that question.
Would you have it for one year?
You know, there's no, do you see, I think it's hard when you start something and where is that? And if we get halfway into this and good things are happening, we're figuring out things the first year, and then all of a sudden we turn around and we're not going to have this funding, we're not going to be able to do this, we've just spent a lot of resources and efforts on something for a year. So do we have any idea or commitment? Because it's not in the memoranding of, the MOU. I don't see anything.
So I'm not sure if I'm the best person to answer this question, but I can say that the.
Or you might. TV. Thank you, Dion.
Okay, is that better? Yes, thank you. So I was saying, I'm not sure if I'm the best person to answer this question. Perhaps Marty and Adam and Kenneth can chime in as well. But you're right, the initial term of the contract is for one year. And again, I think the intent of just having it for one year is to get through the pilot system, reevaluate, see how the program is working, see what new sites need to be added, that sort of thing. But it's definitely my understanding that the intent behind this arrangement would be much, much longer than one year. And I think that's maybe not spelled out as best as it could be, but there's that language in there about expanding to different sites and new schools and that sort of thing. So I don't know if Marty wants to expound on that at all, but it's not listed in the contract itself, but that was definitely the commitment on both parties.
And it is a renewable contract.
Right.
Yeah, certainly the intention. This has been in the works for a really long time. We actually had this operational before Power School came into play. And the data just wasn't available to continue the project, so it got stalled at that point. So every intention is to continue.
So right now, so right now, this is the other question. So we don't really have, it's intention, people think we would like to try to continue the program, but really and truly, we have it for one year.
Right, that's the initial term of the contract.
And the second, the second thing is with, right, so right now, without the agreement, we're sharing data.
Not via this system.
No, but we are sharing data.
Yes.
And so I'm, I think this leads to, we're using a pilot, but we're also sharing data with other agencies by different means, right?
Yes.
So again, it goes back to, this is just one year, and since we can share data without this piece, I just, I have a feeling that for 12 months, we could go down a path and then at the end of those 12 months, something changed, and it says intent of to expand and those types of things, but without something really concrete and without a guarantee of funding, how do we know that that's really going to happen? So I have a big concern about a lot of investment in software and in time with no real commitment that it's really going to last for at least a couple of years.
Well, do we have the history that happened before we ran into the data issue? How long, what, were we involved in sharing data with, for example, the Forsyth Promise or Forsyth Futures?
The literal sharing of data didn't, wasn't carried out very long because it just was unfortunate that Power School was not in a position, it would have been seamless had Power School been able to handle it, but it was not.
So it was a technical problem of something that had already been in place, that had been agreed to?
Yes.
Is that, I mean, I think that part of what I'm hearing is some confusion about history, timeline, where we are, and where the intention is. So I think it's important to get as much clarity about that. And my understanding was that there was a point where we were beginning to do this, we were sharing a data person with the Forsyth Promise, and then the bottom fell out because of a technical problem.
That's right.
And that this is basically a reintroduction of, and that's a place where I'm trying to figure out who's the partner and who, because it's not as clear as I think we'd like it to be.
Well, and I think some of us were not here when the original agreement was there, and then when Power, my understanding only comes from the Power School onset. And part of what happened in that was where we had been able to generate with NCYS data in a much more efficient way. When Power School came into play, the way in which we could extrapolate it and help agencies get what they might need was time-consuming and required manpower that we didn't have. So that was one of our first communications back to agencies, is that, and we've got basically one person on the first floor running Power School, and especially in those first couple of years where we had so many other district issues with transcripts and all those other pieces, we didn't have the ability to help agencies with anything. And so I think part of this has grown out of their willingness to contribute because they need the data, but then how do we technically create language that covers us? And I hear what you're saying, which is, what kind of, what I'm hearing is what would language look like that would protect our investment? Is that an accurate?
That's accurate. I just think it's not just so much the investment of dollars, but of time and resources to start to build a program, and then, I mean, 12 months is a very short time, and so very seldom, in something like this, you would typically, we normally see things that have language that is starting to build out, even with pilot programs. In the second year, you know, if we can, we would like to add on different schools. It just seems very vague with that, and so I have a concern about that, for us to go down a road and then use resources and it, to stop. And I just wondered if we ever, did we draft this? Was this something drafted by Forsyth Futures? And was there room for conversation to be able to put some different language in there so that we could approve that?
So this document generated, it actually existed from when this initiative started previously, and it's been adapted since then.
And remind me when it started.
That was prior to me coming to the school system. I can't think of certain.
Would it be possible to ask Adam to, Adam has history with this, yes. Would it be possible to ask you to answer some of these questions, or would that be uncomfortable?
Can we table it and then maybe have our questions answered and then come back? Can we visit it again?
Well, my preference would be while there are people from Forsyth Promise here who actually know the history and could clarify what's feeling very sloppy or confused, or I guess my question is, I think it could be answered relatively easily.
Adam, would you like, would you like to address anything or share any comments? We'd be more than happy for you to.
I'd like to provide one clarification while Adam's coming up, and that's that we are providing data right now. It's a very difficult process right now for agencies to get data. It's because of the complexity of the parent permissions and the data fees and so forth. I would say that agencies are making do, whereas this provides an effective and secure means to get data to folks who need it.
And I think that Marty brings up a great point. So this is an effective way of doing that, but we're starting out with three agencies, and they're six schools, but three agencies, right?
Right.
And so that's where I'm saying, if we, if this is such a great program and we're trying to expand, where's the commitment that we can do it for a length of time? That's what I don't, that's the piece I'm missing in my concern.
Sure. And with regards to the timing in terms of when this started, I think we're talking 2012, and when we had the first contract ready to go and the system set up, I think it was in May of 2013. So I think that's the time point when we had to put a pause because of Power School. And so we've been working on it since then. So I mean, we've certainly made a considerable investment of time into this up-to-date, and I mean, the community has been interested in this, you know, from then and since then. So I think if that demonstrates a commitment from the community perspective of how interested we are in this system, I think if that's helpful at all for that question. And then as Dr. Ward said, you know, I think we'd expand sites as soon as, you know, we saw having the capacity to do that. So, you know, we have a full-time position, the coordinator who would be on this project, and so they, you know, they'd work as quickly as they could to bring these sites onboard. So I think it would expand as we saw it fit in terms of having enough staff capacity to bring on new sites.
And Adam, as far as I understand, the goal, as far as the promise goes in Forsyth Futures, is to really continue this work into the future for quite some time, that it was not something you were thinking of as a one-time experiment, but more a way that the Forsyth Promise and the district work collaboratively with other agencies to find out what's really making a difference in the lives of our children and what programs are effective versus which programs perhaps are not delivering what they were hoping they would. And I think that's information we all want. So I think the goal is the same information.
But Madam Chair. Absolutely. I would just like to see a commitment in the contract.
And what I was going to say is, we can't put Adam or anyone else on the spot in terms of the funding commitment. That's got to come from the United Way. And so if we're going to go back and seek something that answers that question of what is the long-term partner commitment, I think that's something we need to do. We can't put any of these people on the spot because none of us can speak for United Way
No, but thank you, Adam, for sharing a little history. We appreciate that. Marilyn, did you have a question?
Any other questions?
Other questions, comments? Thank you, Marty.
Thank you.
So I believe we will have Dr. Simmington and Darrell Walker discuss the move of Elementary School Academy and the lease with the Norcross School.
Evening Chairman Jones. Dr. Emery. I turned the microphone off. This evening, we wanted to give you a quick update on a couple of things. For several years, the district has been in partnership with the Children's Home on Renolda Road, and recently, the Children's Home became an affiliate of the Cross Nor School. Cross Nor School has a facility in Avery County, and that partnership led to some discussion with us around schooling that happens at the Children's Home. For many years, we have operated the Kingswood School in partnership with the Children's Home. We've also, at the same time, operated an Elementary School Academy or a program now called Elementary School Academy in one form or another. or a, a program now called Elementary School Academy in one form or another at several locations now currently at Cook Elementary. For a variety of reasons, our intent or our request and recommendation is that the Elementary School Academy moved to the Cross-Nor campus. And in doing so, that impacts our contractual status with Cross-Nor School. So I want to tell, talk to you a little bit about the program side, and Darryl will talk to you about the facility side. The services that the district provides are teachers and administrators on that campus. The services that the Cross-Nor School at the Children's Home will provide are the therapeutic services. So we have a, we have a range of mental health services, including day treatment. We currently have six 12 at the Children's Home, now the Cross-Nor School. The students who are in the Elementary School Academy will begin there. We expect that the partnership with the Cross-Nor School would continue. And we've had a history of strong partnership, and we look forward to that continuing. I will take questions or entertain questions after Darryl finishes.
Thank you, Dr. Simmington. Just to add on that to the facility side, what our move will detail will be, we're going to occupy two buildings on campus. One will be the Reynolds Building that's on campus. You may recall it, I think originally was the original Mudpies, pre-K center back in the day. And the Edwards Building, which we occupy some of the space upstairs now. We will occupy the downstairs of that. We will, we will, square footage-wise, that impacts about 10,000 square foot. And you will see in your board book tonight, it does incur a cost of about $1,500 a month for rental for those on top of the dollars that we're already spending for the Kingswood property. So technology-wise, we've all, we've been over there. They've worked really well with us, actually going to save us some money there. We're able to sort of tap in to their wireless system to support us so that technology-wise, we're not making any large investments. We will be providing custodial services for those facilities as well as the security for the campus, which we want to be, not be adding an additional officer. We will continue with our current officer at Kingswood. I will tell you, one of the things that we've sort of worked with, went Salem PD on this, and they've been very helpful, is that we're going to dress our officer down a little bit so our softer look for our kids on that camp, on those, on the campus there. They will not be in, I'm not going to pick you out, Mr. Hart, but they will, they will be in just khakis and a golf-type shirt, not a full uniform. Sort of soften the blow a little bit there on campus, so. But facility-wise, that's, we're, we're still going to be cooking our food off-campus and delivering to campus to serve our kids. And outside of that, I think that's all the details, I think, on the facility side.
Just a couple of other notes. In an effort to streamline communications between Cross-Nor and the district, Darryl and I have been sort of partnering with this, but in our, in the agreement that you had before, you, you will note that the new point of contact will be the instructional superintendent for the Kingswood School. And that, that's Trish Ganey. And so Ms. Ganey will be the single point of contact. Although we will be there to support her. There are a couple of other items that will need adjustment. In the section that relates to the number of students, that number that you see in the document really pertains to middle and high. We need to add the, the elementary number to that. And also would point out that there is a companion piece to this document, a memorandum of agreement, that relates to the partnership between Cross-Nor School and the district related to the program and the services that Cross-Nor provides. And just to also clarify, on the action page that indicates that Cross-Nor will provide special education services, we would continue to provide the special education services through our EC department.
Dr. Simmington, just one more time so I understand the, the other document that you speak of, there are changes to that document as well with this move?
There are changes to the document. Program includes the educational services that the district provides and the mental health services.
And do these go hand-in-hand? Because I don't think we've seen that particular document.
Correct. Yes.
And will that document come to us around that?
We're still working on that. I don't know, Dionne, if you want to speak to that.
That other document that's referenced is an MOU that we execute with all of the mental health service providers in the district. And that document is typically signed off by Dr. Emery, but we will make sure that it's, it doesn't typically come to the board for approval. But we will, if you prefer, we'd be happy to send it to you to.
No, I was, I'm just making sure it, the, it referenced two documents kind of together. And I just wanted to be clear that this is not something that we would be hearing again.
That, that's correct. And, and, and that's why when I submitted this, I did submit that in draft form. Just, I want to clarify, there are a few minor edits that we would be making, not to, not substantially to alter the terms of the contract. The essential terms will remain the same, but kind of like what Dr. Simmington was saying, there's a few minor edits that will be made to the contract before ultimately it is signed.
That was my next question. What were the, since it is a draft? So you're wanting us to approve the contract, but it's really in draft form?
That's correct. And so the, again, the essential terms of this contract will not, have, have not changed. The only minor edits are changing the name of the Cross-Nor School, taking out the "the", instead of the Cross-Nor School and Children's Home, it's just Cross-Nor School and Children's Home. Identifying Mr. Loftus as the CEO and the designate to be the contact person within the contract. The school system designate will be Trish Ganey. That will be named in the, in the contract. And then, I'm sorry, there was one other minor edit that is escaping my mind at the moment. But those were the only minor edits that remained.
So, so is it to us in draft form? Is the, but by the time the book was compiled, you all had conversations about that? Is that the reason that we're?
Right. At the time the book was compiled, those, those minor edits had not been finalized. So the contract that you ultimately will sign will be in final form.
Okay.
If it, if it's approved.
But we do, we also need to clarify then, is the recommendation an error? Because what I'm hearing is, the recommendation says Cross-Nor will provide day treatment services as well as special education. And we don't need to approve the recommendation if that's not accurate.
So the recommendations should not include the special education services.
So do we need to, do we need to make a motion to, to strike that?
So if that is an error on the agenda page, that the way it was drafted, then that is my error. But the day treatment services is what will be provided. But that's an error on the agenda page. But if that is an error that was, that was in the contract, again, it was an error on my part, and I will fix that with regard to the special education.
So I guess we're asking, do we strike it on their action?
Could you point to me, I'm sorry where you're looking?
It's the agenda page.
Just look on the, on the agenda page with the recommendation.
It's the last sentence in the middle paragraph.
Above the bold.
Yes.
Okay.
Right above the bold.
So, so yes, so that, then that was, I'll, I'll accept that error in my drafting of the agenda page. But they're providing day treatment services. We ultimately, as the school district, and I think that is spelled out in the contract, are responsible for providing special education services. That's our responsibility as a school district. So they would, they're only providing day treatment services.
That's not in this.
But that's not in what we have.
That's not in what you have?
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm asking, I'm asking if, if there is something in the supplemental documents, this other memorandum of understanding, MOU, is, is in this, it's in the MOU?
It's in the MO, but not in this.
Which we don't have, and you're saying the superintendent.
And it, and it also says in the, in the kind of preamble section of the contract that the school system is responsible for providing the free and appropriate public education for children with disabilities. So ultimately, it's the school system responsible for providing special education and making sure that, that the children are provided FAP. So if that was, again, if that was a scribbler's error in the agenda page, I apologize about that. They will not be providing educational services, just day treatment.
Okay, other questions, board members? For Mr. Walker, Mr. Simmington, Dr. Simmington? This language is correct.
So the MOA is still in development. And it goes into greater detail about what the district provides in terms of personnel, as well as what Cross-Nor provides in terms of day treatment and mental health services.
Other questions, board members? Thank you. Okay, next we have our building and grounds report. We had a great meeting, covered a lot of information, some discussion around the possibility of a community coffee shop and what that would look like with partnering with some of our students from Kennedy. Update from Pat Ivy and others from NCDOT around the Business 40 closings and the staging of that. Trish Ganey gave us an update on the bail schedule. And we had an update around our contract procurement and project delivery methods. So that was our building and grounds committee for today. Next will be the policy committee report. We had a very short, we had a long building and grounds committee meeting, so we had short conversation around just an energy policy and how we will be bringing that back at the beginning of next year for further discussion and review. So that concludes our discussion items this evening, and we move into our action items. First up, we have the approval of the 2017-18 bail times. Do I have a motion to approve? We had two changes. Do I have a motion to approve bail times? Ms. Parker, second. Ms. Taylor, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Approval of the data sharing agreement for 2017-2018. Do I have a motion to approve?
Yes, I move we approve. And I would like to just stress how long this has been in the works and that I really feel like it's not a new thing at all, so.
Thank you, Ms. Mott Singer. Do I have a second?
I second that.
Ms. Taylor, any discussion? I, I will just say again, I, I appreciate the, the history there, but I, I really have some, some problems voting on the agreement without seeing and writing the, the commitment that's there. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or comments? All in favor? Okay, two in favor, all opposed? Three, sorry, Marilyn, I'm sorry. Three, okay. Three in favor, all opposed. Two, so the motion carries, three to two. Approval of the move of the Elementary School Academy and lease agreement with the Norcross School. Do I have a motion to approve? Ms. Mott Singer, do I have a second? Ms. Parker, any discussion? All in favor? Approval of the Kernsville Police Department School Resource Officer Contract for 2017-18. Do I have a motion to approve?
Can I ask a question about these before we do this?
Yes.
Please. I didn't see a whole lot of differences in, in the three. Are there any differences? I mean, I saw a few small ones, but I mean, anything major?
So a few years ago, just to give a little bit, back up a little bit of history, the contracts were standardized so that they were all pretty much the same. There are a few differences between the three contracts. For example, the, the Kernsville Police Department does not have an evening deputy program, although that program's gone away from the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office. The, the, but primarily the main substantial terms are the same. The biggest differences are the pricing, the, the fees for, for both agencies. But they are, the majority of the, the other terms are the same.
And the fees are still basically the same, just based on the number of schools that we have, correct?
So the, the fees are, the fees do fluctuate. And there's an increase in, actually in each of the three proposed contracts, there is an increase from the previous year.
Right.
But they're, they're, they're based on the calculations that the agencies provide to us as far as their salary increases, benefits, and those other incurred expenses.
So the increases are not all the same across the agencies?
Right.
But, but it, yes, it is based on their, their, the schools that they cover and the off, the number of officers that are involved and, and that sort of thing.
And the, and the extra hours and whatnot look, look to be the same, about the same?
So, yes, so, so that is one thing that is the same across the board. The extra duty hours did go up in equal increments across the board in all three agencies.
I think we would be correct in saying that the difference is the difference in the pay and salary schedules of those agencies that we're contracting with, right? So the Winston-Salem Police Department has a higher salary schedule than maybe the, the other agencies. And so when we're contracting that, I would say that's probably your biggest difference in the dollar amounts.
And that's for this coming school year, yes?
Pardon?
Yes. That's this coming school year?
Yes.
But we, we've seen those differences year to year when we've renewed the contract. It's been that, those same differences have been there.
Yes, that's correct.
Other questions, board members? If not, do I have a motion to approve the Kernsville Police Department School Resource Officer Contract for 1718? Ms. Clark, do I have a second? Ms. Mott Singer, any additional discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Approval of the revised Forsyth County Sheriff's Office School Resource Officer Contract for 2017-18. Again, this is a draft.
That's correct. If I can clarify the reason why this one is submitted in draft form as opposed to final form is because there was one other issue with regard to access to education records and video that has, has not yet been finalized. But other than that, all the other terms of the contract have been finalized. And so what I'm asking is that you approve to allow me to continue to work out that term as a, of the contract. That's the only remaining term that's unresolved. The county attorney and I have just had a little bit of difficulty getting up together to discuss that issue.
So it's a change from the current contract that we have with them?
That's what they're proposing. But I'm proposing it remain the same.
And does that vary from the other two?
That, that would vary from the other two, their request.
And in what way?
They're, they actually proposed adding more lengthy language explaining things that I didn't feel need to be in the contract. For example, the, the, the law regarding the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act and when officers can have access to that information and when they can't. And it just didn't feel like it was appropriate to be in the contract. It's more of, this is the law, and this is the understanding of the law, and this is when your officers will have access to video and, and when they won't. It's not appropriate to put that in memo form in the contract.
So if we approve this contract and they don't, and they, they don't agree to that, what are we going to do?
Then I would have to bring it back to you if there were any, any changes with that. What I'm asking is for you to approve me to continue to negotiate this contract. I don't anticipate that, that it will change substantially. Again, the language in the contract is, is the same across the board with regard to access to cameras.
So should we be tabling this particular contract? If it's, if we're not voting on it as written, then I'm not sure what we're voting on.
Well, we just, it's, it's kind of the same thing with the, what we, what you just did with the Cross-Nor contract. That was a draft as well. Where, where, where it, it, we, there were some changes with some verbiage, but it's, again, we very typically.
I think the Cross-Nor was not in the draft form contract. It was actually on the page in the board book. So it wasn't, the Cross-Nor issue was the write-up in the board book that had been presented, but it was.
Right, but it, it's still a draft, so Dionne was not finished with changes to the contract.
So are you still working on the Cross-Nor one?
There were some very, very minor edits.
Were there pieces that were not finished with that contract?
Yes, that is, that is correct. And it is noted as draft in the contract, in the board booklet.
But with either of them, you'll bring, you'll have to bring them back if, if it deviates from what we voted on. Is that correct?
So in the, in the, in the Cross-Nor, and that's why I wanted to just make you, make you understand what the only other, you know, minor changes were. Again, it was taking out the "the" for Cross-Nor School and designating Brett Loftus. So if you, if you were okay with those, because they don't substantially alter the contract, I wouldn't necessarily have to bring that back to you.
Right.
But for the, the Forsyth County Sheriff's. But for the, the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office. And, and again, presented because of the, the timing of it and, and making sure that it was done at the same time. I want it to be done at the same time. I don't anticipate that that will change, but that's the only other issue, the, the part that pertains to video records that, that is not yet resolved. So if, if you prefer to table it until that's finalized.
But, so the part about video records, though, exists in statute, is that?
Correct.
So if there is statute that defines it, then no contract can come up with something different.
That's correct. What they wanted to do was to include language in the, in the contract that I thought was unnecessary to include.
Right, but, but that it would not change the contract, regardless, that we followed the statute.
Exactly.
Okay.
And the language they're proposing was just kind of a memorandum of what the law says, that I didn't feel was necessary to go in the contract.
So it's the Department of Redundancy Department?
Is that, I, I do think that it's, it's not typically our procedure to, to vote on contracts that say draft. And so it's, it's not really a good practice for us to start to get into. I think it, it can be problematic, and if, if it doesn't come before the board, ultimately, we are the ones responsible for, for voting and seeing what's in there. So just moving forward, I, I would, I'd rather not even see them on the agenda if they're a draft and just have them finished before they, before they land in our lap. Okay, so- And to my understanding, you have it in draft form because of the time constraint you wanted.
That was one of the factors, yes.
Well, we, we have a call-in meeting for July. It could have been on that agenda. So the, we have in front of us the Forsyth County Sheriff's School Officer Contract for, Resource Officer Contract for 1718. Do I have a motion to approve this in draft form? No, okay.
Consider it be held in July meeting.
Meeting. So if we could, do I have a motion to table, to place on the agenda for July?
So move to table.
Okay, Ms. Parker and Ms. Taylor, all in favor? Motion carries, thank you. Next is the approval of the revised Winston-Salem Police Department School Resource Officer Contract for 1718.
I move to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Mottzinger. A second. Ms. Taylor, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Next is the approval of the schematic plan for replacement of the stadium at Mount Tabor High School. We've talked about this at length in the last building and grounds meeting. Do I have a motion to approve? Ms. Clark, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Mottzinger, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Next is the approval of the budget amendment number seven and transfer number seven. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Ms. Mottzinger, second. Ms. Parker, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Next, the approval of the budget amendment number eight and transfer number eight. Do I have a motion to approve? Mean an approval of the general personnel report. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Ms. Parker, second. Ms. Clark, all in favor? Motion carries. Wonderful. Okay, do we have anyone signed up? All right, well, that concludes our meeting for this evening. Board members, we do have some personnel matters that we need to discuss. So if I could have a motion to enter into closed session?
So move.
Ms. Mottzinger, second. Ms. Clark, all in favor? Thank you very much. Safe travels. Thank you.